Okay, good evening, everybody, and thank your councilors. We've got a few weeks of double nights. But this is a budget workshop, and I'll turn it over to Dennis.
And I'm gonna go ahead and pass it right over.
I would have did that.
And I got the short straw, did I? So, Mr. Mayor, councilors, good evening. Heather Hunter, Finance Director. For the viewing audience, I do wanna take care of a couple of housekeeping items. First, if you're interested in viewing the budget, it is located on the city's website. That is www.louisstonmaine.gov, and Maine is all spelled out. And you will notice on the front banner there, you'll find a link to the budget. You may have to hit the right arrow key to get the next banner turned up style to appear, but it's on there. Additionally, you can view the document at the City Clerk or the library. Also, if anybody has any questions, comments, suggestions regarding the FY22 budget, they can feel free to email me at hhunter. That's H-H-U-N-T-E-R@louisstonmaine.gov. And I will be happy to look into your suggestions and share it with the council as well. To the council, if any of you would like to kind of do a refresher budget meeting before we get too far in the process, feel free to email me, and we can either go through it via Zoom, online, or via the phone, however best works for you. And then lastly, I believe everybody received an email from Dennis and the School Department that the Zoom link was sent out for Monday's school committee meeting at 6:00. So if there aren't any other housekeeping questions, we'll kind of dive right into the budget. On page 19 is kind of the summary budget. It's not only summarizes it by departments, but also by category. You'll see down below there, personal services, contractual supplies, and fixed, as well as capital. So that's kind of a good reference page when you're generally thinking about, well, gee, if we cut this or we cut that. If we go back there, you can kind of see where your your cost drivers are. So the first topic tonight to talk about is personal services, which includes both salary and fringe for all general fund-covered workers. And on page 20, you will see kind of how the employees are dispersed over the various departments. You will notice that the 12 positions that were frozen in FY21 are added back. And that brings our total TO, our table of organization, up to 359 employees. So on regular wages, that is just regular time, and then it moves into overtime and double time. But before I jump into this, there are 15 requests for new positions and other personnel-related new programs and services, including conversions of part-time to full-time positions, promoting a patrol officer to detective, and a detective to sergeant. Those are on that new program and service list. As a reminder, none of those positions are in the base budget, as it stands now. So if you look at personal services, that's obviously the biggest cost driver of the entire FY22 budget. It represents $1,253,870, our 7.4% increase. Right now, all of the contracts are in place through the end of the year, so we don't have to worry about significant salary reserves and not understanding where some of the contracts might fall. All of those are in place. Additionally, when you look at some of the regular time positions, you will see the big jumps. Those are where the 12 positions are added back. So that's how you kind of know. And if you look on page 25 and going clear through there, that shows you every position within the general fund. The added back positions are bolded for you, so you can kind of see they stand out from that perspective. So looking down through there, we have 18 active employees currently that are part of the in-service retirement program. So their salaries are reduced from anywhere between 5% and 15%. And the pool is made up of a combination of patrol officers, MSA position, a management personnel, and then 12 firefighters. Right now, the only CDBG-funded position that we're looking at is in code enforcement, and that's a continuation of that downtown code enforcement position. So looking at the overtime component of this, you will see overtime increased by just about $102,000, or just under 6%. Again, the implication of the contract COLAs and the step increases have an impact on the overtime as well. Clearly, the public safety overtime is the biggest jump that you will see, where you have increases of $86,000 in fire and about just under $20,000 in the police department.
Where is that? What page is that on?
So if you turn to page 22.
Yeah, thank you.
And it continues on page 23. Temporary wages grew by just under $40,000, or just under 20%. As part of a cost savings measurement in the FY21 budget, we pretty much froze and cut all temporary wages. And the lion's share of that temporary wages impacts Public Works. So that directly impacts how they're able to service the city, maintain the lots, trash pickup, mowing, and so forth. So you will see a lot of those temporary wages are reinstated. The bright spot is, we don't have two elections this year. So we did have almost a $6,700 savings and temporary wages from that part. And again, all of that $40,000 in temporary wages is pretty much all in that Parks and Open Spaces account. And we'll revisit that when we get into some of the detailed divisions on Public Works. We do have a slight increase in temporary wages in the library. Mostly, that represents their increase in minimum wage, as well as their anniversary step increases. And then lastly, from a temporary wage standpoint, prior to FY21, the city was contributing $7,500 of general fund to this recreation program for the aquatics program. As was mentioned during the budget presentation, currently, there's no plans to open the school this summer. With the uncertainty of vaccines and COVID and so forth, we're just not in a position to think that's the best idea to do. We are making available splash pads and other water features that will help during those hot summer days. But right now, we still have that $7,500 savings in that temporary wage account for aquatics. The other fees, which is also on page 23, had an increase of $17,000. Other fees makes up all the committees and board stipends. It also includes our city attorney and the external audit prepared by the auditors. And that actually will be coming to you to renew or to award the bid for the next five-year contract. So we are looking at a small increase in the auditors of $3,000, and then a $13,000 increase in attorney fees. Counselor Ray?
Thank you. So a conversation came up at the school committee level, and I just wanted to revisit it here as we are looking at the wages for boards and commissions. Is there any annual increase factored into those? The School Department has been factoring in a 3% increase year over year for the School Committee when our stipends are set by ordinance.
Correct.
Are we doing that on our side, too?
No, at this point, and I would have to revisit the ordinance, but my understanding is you have to be in an outgoing position to approve the increase for the next group of councilors and mayor.
Yeah, they talked briefly about putting forward an increase, but it didn't come up in our parking lot after that. So I think we're all set. But the School Department has been budgeting for a 3% increase in expenditure, which just doesn't make any sense to me, and I didn't know.
Yes, we don't do that.
Okay, great, thanks.
From the fringe benefit standpoint, we had an overall increase of just under $600,000 there. We had a severance pay decrease of $14,200 based upon anticipated retirements. We had a flurry of retirements, and we're in a little lull right now, so we felt comfortable reducing that. Main state retirement has increased, that's probably the biggest jump, is $332,000 for main state retirement. And we had kind of a triple whammy with regards to this. The employer share of contributions increased for both the regular plan and the public safety plan. So the regular plan went from 10.1% to 10.3%, and then the public safety went from 10.8% to 11.3%. So that is on all compensated salaries. Additionally, obviously, the approved COLAs and steps that increase the salaries will also increase the contribution. And then the third component, up until this year, if you had a retired, rehired person, there were no additional employer contributions required. This year, anybody rehired after a certain date, we had to pay 5% from an employer contribution. Now, all retired, rehired personnel will have a required 5%. So, and it runs the gamut. We have people like Dave Gudis up in IT that have been retired, rehired for a number of years, to ones that we recently approved or had retired and took advantage of the drop program last year. We are now paying 5% on all of those positions. So that's probably the biggest change. Counselor Clement?
Thank you. Quick question on that, Heather. The 5%, that is just into main person. It does not accumulate anything for the retired, rehired person. They don't gain any benefit out of that, is that correct?
That's correct.
So they stay where they are, but we contribute 5%?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Deferred compensation and Social Security and Medicare increased by $16,000 for deferred comp, and about $227,000 for Social Security and Medicare. And again, that's all based upon increased salaries and COLA, as well as adding back those 12 positions. I have to keep reminding you of that, at least in this category, because it has an implication everywhere. It bumps health insurance, it bumps the retirement, it bumps Social Security. So all of those are impacted by adding those 12 positions back. The retirement health savings program, that's a program that allows employees, once they reach a certain balance for sick in some units vacation time, that time is converted to cash and put into a retirement health savings account. After they retire, they can use it for health insurance benefits. So based upon where people were snapshot at the end of this year, we had a small decrease of about $1,200, which is really good considering a lot of people didn't take some vacation time this past year because of COVID. So I thought it was gonna be higher. We have one city pension left on the city pension plan, and that's a plan that was in place prior to the city participating in main state retirement. So that one city pensioner is allowed to get cost of living increases at the same level that other current employees are, so we anticipate that increasing about $1,100. The health insurance and the health insurance buyout, those kind of go hand in hand. So employees can take the health insurance if they elect to waive the health insurance. They get four months of the premium based upon what they took versus what they're eligible for. So if they didn't take anything, and they're eligible for the family plan, they get four months of that premium as a cost savings measure. We were very, very fortunate with the January 1st, 2021 health insurance increase. That only rose by 2%. We had budgeted in the current year 8.5%. So that was, you know, that's buffered some of the other surprises that we've got. Going forward, we anticipate between those two accounts to have an increase of $32,000. The healthcare educator, that's a program that relates to the health program that we participate in. If you meet certain wellness goals, you get an additional discount, if you will, off of the premium. We expect that to be relatively flat. There's a small decrease of $600 there. Boston Mutual is flat. The flexible spending, and again, I kind of jumped over to page 24 if we're going down the list there. That has about a $1,000 increase, and again, that's related to those 12 positions being added back. The health reimbursement arrangement has a decrease of about $10,000, and it's based upon usage, that is also a use it or lose it program. So between usage and more employees taking advantage of the health insurance incentive, that's provided us a small decrease or a fairly decent decrease in that account. Workers' compensation, as we talked about in the audit presentation, we have essentially an unfunded liability there to the tune of about $4 million. We've been slowly but surely funding that through operating budget, as well as a fund balance transfer. And I'm proposing we do the same this year. So the operating budget would have a $10,500 increase, and I'm looking at funding about $100,000 of that unfunded liability from fund balance. And I'm hoping, now that we've got a lot of our legacy claims either settled or they're retired now, I'm hoping we'll see a decrease in that unfunded liability at that point. Unemployment compensation, which is the last fringe benefit, I'm anticipating increasing that by $2,500 due to the self-insurance experience. The city, with the change in the COVID unemployment regulations, we had several of our part-time employees be eligible for unemployment benefits, which normally they would not have been. Because we are self-insured, we had to pay 100% of those benefits. So we had a significant draw on our unemployment reserves. The other category, you might recall, relates to the municipal garage, and this is kind of one of those legacy items of where they inserted it in the budget. And that reflects billing to both internal departments, as well as external departments from the municipal garage. So that first account that says JE, those are all internal billings. So municipal garage is billing the fire department or the police department. Versus the second cash line item, that's billing for outside organizations, like the sheriff's department. So you will see there was a slight decrease of $5,000 there. So that kind of, in a nutshell, talks about personal services and fringe. Counselor Ray?
Just because I am happening to see it while I'm open to page 25, there's a number of the divisions, there's a line called sick incentive. Could you tell us about that?
Yes. Most contracts, including the non-union, have some sort of incentive built in. If they go for a period of time without calling in sick, they either get, depending on the bargaining unit, they get a day vacation and/or compensation, depending on which bargaining unit you are. And the public safety, the longer that they go without calling in sick, because it's an overtime savings, the more of that incentive they get.
I just, my hackles are raised a little bit in that we're in a global pandemic, and knowing it's built into the contract, I know that that would be negotiated upon, but we've stopped emphasizing perfect attendance in the school system because we don't want folks to come in sick. And I think maybe the same thing might be applicable to those contracts going forward, knowing that public health is so critical to stopping the spread of disease. And I mean, I didn't get sick once this year because I was masked in every situation that I saw someone, that sort of thing. So just it pinged a red flag.
I will offer the fact that when COVID started, we essentially relaxed that policy. If they were suspected or around somebody that tested positive or had a flu-like symptoms, we went for a significant period of time where that was not implemented at that point. To your point exactly, we didn't want them coming in sick.
Okay, that's really helpful to hear.
Counselor Jensen?
Yeah, yes, I would just echo kind of what Counselor Ray was saying, kind of like the red flag went up. It kind of feels like we're incentivizing someone who's sick to come into work, and that, to me, just doesn't quite sit right. So I'll give it some thought, but yeah, doesn't really sit right with me.
Any other questions on the personal services? So the next category that we're gonna talk about, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Khalid?
You're fine.
Kind of blends into your background.
It's okay. I think you may have mentioned this, but can you tell me again why there, for example, like City Clerk Department, Preciousing Agent Department, like the wages have increased? Did you say that was due to benefits, or?
The wages increased because they're collective bargaining positions. So we have active collective bargaining contracts in place, so we can program them right into the position this year. If we're in the process of negotiations, we can't program that detail in by position until we settle.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So on page 35, talks about the capital items, and it continues to page 36. So, and then we have the LCIP on 37. So I'm not gonna review each one of these line by line, but what I will offer you, I'd be happy to address any that you have or any questions. These meet the criteria in the fund balance policy, that they're one-time, either purchases, repairs, or so forth, that are not part of normal operations. In some cases, we've probably stretched that a little bit, but in most instances, we've been able to hold firm on those classifications. So as you go down through there, and as we go through the other workshops, if some of those items kind of ping for you, please feel free to email me, and I could put them on the parking lot with the valuation of those items once we reach those general discussion workshops. But you will notice on page 36 that the total move from the operating budget to fund balance is about $2.7 million. Additionally, and I believe Counselor Jalinas asked me about this on Tuesday, the LCIP items that were moved from the LCIP request to the fund balance request totaled $1 million, just under $1.3 million. So right now, we're right about $4 million from fund balance. So our coverage has gone from 14.38% down to 10.59%. Counselor Jalinas?
Thank you. Can you just remind me how those nine items from the LCIP got moved over to the other side? Just what was the rationale again behind? I think you might have mentioned it to me, but I just wanted to understand how those decisions were made or arrived at.
They're just proposed at this point. The council can elect to change anything that they want. I typically use two kind of rationales for my purposes. One, based upon dollar value. Some of the smaller projects that we can move in there tend to make sense. If it's technology-related, it's got such a short useful life, even though it's big dollars, I tend to move that when we can to fund balance. The third option is anything that may have to do with what I refer to as private activity. So if we do something to a building, but we have the intention of potentially selling that building later on from an economic development project, that tends to, that's what IRS deems to be private activity, and they tend to not like that for bonding purposes. So anything that may be kind of ugly like that, I tend to move over.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
And then on page 37, that's kind of where the LCIP stands right now. As a reminder, we started at $15.4 million, and we were $8,015,000 above the 80% limit. So we deferred the parking garage, the first phase, based upon what the council approved on their meeting Tuesday night. So that saved $952,000. Then in the second, or the third column, actually, you will see a series of other kind of movements. And those are projects that either have been deferred, moved to fund balance, or in the case of the municipal garage with their vehicles, they want to make sure they get their vehicles, so they ask for it in both places. So there's kind of a duplication there, so I can strip it out of one place and then move the other one into fund balance. So we did that for about $2.9 million worth of items, bringing kind of the total request down to $11,588,000. It still needs probably some work, because we're $4,182,000 over that limit still, but it's kind of a good starting point for that effort. Counselor Ray?
Thank you. I know the council, and you have already heard this, but for the benefit of the public, the school committee was asking about changing the percent bonded limitation in the future, so just flagging that again now, because they would like their LCIP items to go through, which I think is just in our interest, I'll say. So just wanted to raise that as we look at it now.
Okay.
So on that note, though, Heather, can you talk about the history and how well we've done at reducing, and your thoughts on that policy? And maybe even Dennis can chime in?
Certainly. Actually, I can try to pull up a debt service. I benchmark pretty much all of our debt service against 2005. That's when the city had its highest debt service outstanding at that point in time. Keep in mind that when we go and when we sell before the rating agency, they've not necessarily really downgraded. they've not necessarily really downgraded that category because you get ranked on or rated on different categories within the overall municipality. One of them is debt service. But they, they have consistently referred to at as high but manageable. So as every time we make some strides in, in reducing that debt service, not only does it help the operating budget, but it also helps the, um, the rating of the, the city debt service. So that would be one thing. We have been able to take advantage of a number of refundings, including one that was just done recently that I, I circulated to all of you regarding that. From that standpoint, I would venture to guess that's probably the last opportunity that we're going to have for refunding. We have, we are all current on that. And what the refundings allowed us to do, um, when I started kind of in this position and even a few years before, again, that 2005 snapshot date, the average life of our bond was 15 years. Which means we were taking 15 years to pay that off. If it was a technology piece, if it was um, a pickup truck at, at municipal garage, a lot of those items, we've used up their useful life and we were still paying debt on them. So one of the things the refunding and the 80% rule allowed us to do is shrink that useful life down to seven and a half years. So when you, with the exception of this year, the debt service as a presented percentage of the overall operating budget has been right around that 17 to 20% mark. And we've strategically left it that high because it allowed us to enable that seven and a half year payoff. And boy, have we saved the interest on this stuff. I, I mean, we've cut our interest, outstanding interest by about 20, 23 million dollars since 2005. Counselor Jensen?
And Mayor, I don't know if you want me to, because I can see their hands and sometimes you're looking down. Is that okay?
No, I appreciate it. Because I, when Alicia first raised her hand, I was kind of looking at her. Thank you.
Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Director Hunter. Um, first a question and a comment. Um, on the LCIP requested projects, the Loufer Kennedy Park, it has 131,000 covered, the entire amount covered by other sources. What is the other source?
We are looking at that um, through a bond sale premium. Again, when we sold the bonds this year, and I'm trying, trying to not to get really technical, but when we sell the bonds, sometimes if they anticipate the interest rate rising, we get the premium upfront. And we've gotten premium the last three years. So that enabled us to use that. That doesn't mean you will still, as a council, have the opportunity to approve which projects you want to fund. So if, if that is one you want to put on the parking lot, I can do that right now.
Yeah, definitely. I still want to have a holistic conversation as a city about why we specifically want the public bathrooms. And there may be multiple reasons. Then we can look at possible locations in the city to match those reasons. So without having that wider conversation, I'm just not comfortable spending $131,000 on something when we may decide that, oh, we don't want it at that location. It's best for the city if we put it just like the next block over. We need to have that conversation as a city. I've been saying that a lot. So not going to vote for a budget that doesn't do that. Um, and I guess the other, the comment that would make, and I guess that'd be more towards Counselor Ray, um, just looking at the school committee side of how much is, you know, being bonded there, taking into consideration um, the new wing at the high school. I just hope that the school committee is, is listening and, and can understand that they're asking for a lot. And we've given them a lot as a city. And as a former school committee member myself, I am just reconciling what they're asking for in the LCIP on top of the new wing at the high school and such an increase in the budget. Um, I think it's gotta be a non-starter. So I guess if you could relay that information, because that definitely stands out to me looking at this here. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I guess I'd like to reemphasize the thing, same thing. That policy has saved our community so much money and has put us in, in a much better fiscal footing. And I, I think if anything, this, this council should uh, actually uh, uh, make it even better. But I know that's a lot to ask too. So, but I, I honestly think we could, we could do even higher, so, or less, I mean.
Counselor Jalinas?
Thank you, Director. Um, am I right in assuming, I'm looking at the pickleball courts under one of the LCIP items and it says other sources 179.3 for that. Am I right in assuming that that would, those funds are also coming from a bond sale premium or is that something different?
It's either coming, at this point, um, since it's not moved into fund balance, yes, that would be from free premium as well.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Clement?
Thank you. Uh, just to concur with what the mayor had to say, anytime we can save money on interest, it, it's insane to think that you're going to bond a vehicle that's useful life for three or four years over a period of 15 years and pay for it. I mean, I've, I've been involved in things where we have taken from bond, things like vehicles and put them into an operating budget now because it had never been done that way before. People go, oh, we've never done that. We can't possibly. But then they found out they could save money by avoiding the interest on it by putting it into an operating budget. So I would concur that we're doing well. Uh, having read back on the history, fiscal history of the city, uh, there was a point in time when things were pretty dire around here. I would hate to see us head back in that direction. And one way to do that would be to, to bring out your credit cards and start spending. You gotta pay someday. And when you pay over a long period of time, you pay a much dearer price. I thank you.
Um, listening to you, I was able to pull up the debt service trend. Um, like I referred to, the 2005 was the peak. At that point in time, we had $101.5 million worth of debt service outstanding between principal and interest. Right now, we're running about $51.8 million. That's how much we reduced that. Um, clearly, the interest is the biggest component. We went from 29.9, I'm sorry, $29.7 million in interest to $8 million. So.
By comparison, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say by comparison, the interest rate back in 2005 was much higher than what it would be now. So we, we were actually, if we were at that rate, we'd have saved significantly uh, greater monies today than what we are. Is that correct?
Uh, actually, that's where the refundings come into play. Because we were able, it's just like refinancing your mortgage. We were able to take it from a higher bond to a lower bond. And by keeping, um, like I said, the percentage of the operating budget hovering right around that 19%, we've been able to make strides accompanied by the 80% rule.
I think Counselor Khalid is next.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so Heather, regarding the pickleball, like just looking at the other projects, it's very like sidewalk maintenance and um, street improvement regarding like the health and safety of our community members. But regarding the court, is it, um, can we, can we, can you put that on the side? But I would like to put that on the side.
Certainly.
Um, and I also read somewhere that the school has due to like um, increased state general purpose funding or aid, they have some unassigned balance of, I, I couldn't remember the, the amount, around like 295,000. Can't they use that for like other projects that they're requesting of, of the city? For example, maybe under the LCIP or um, any of the, like the security upgrade?
Yes, they could, but I would recommend you posing that question Monday night.
Okay.
So not for you. You could verify what their balance is and, and how they anticipate using that.
Okay. Um, another question is, I would like to put like, so the red shop shell preservation, that's I'd like to put a pause on that as well or on the side because this doesn't seem immediate to me personally.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Counselor Ray?
Thanks. Um, on the airport reconstruction of the east ramp, I see that 78, 750 is in fund balance. What about the one, the other 150K?
So what happened with that? And I'm glad you brought that up. That project originally was $228,750. You might recall the airport manager came before you to ask for um, funding of that $75,000 currently. And the remaining, remainder of the project is that 150 and, or, and that was moved over to um, or I'm sorry, the 78,000 was moved over to fund balance. So we are already funded a portion of it.
Okay, so the total cost is the 228, but we've already funded 150 of it or 75 of it?
I got it backwards. We funded 150 and, and we need to fund the remainder 78.
Okay, and that's why the 78 is in fund balance? Okay, as already funded. And then, um, I just want to echo Director Hunter's sentiments. Um, for some of the schools company stuff, I'm just a messenger. So like, I don't really need a response sometimes. But uh, I would really encourage folks to dig into the school budget before Monday night and come with questions. The last three years, we've gotten to that meeting. They give their presentation, then no one has questions and I'm kind of at a loss for how to liaise between the two. So um, I would just really encourage folks to dig into that as Director Hunter just said, and ask those questions on Monday.
Heather, I have a couple I'd like to add to the, the list. The citywide revaluation and the Riverfront Island master plan, I realize those are both LCIP, but potentially with made room there, other things could be shifted there.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was the second one? The master, uh, the Riverfront master plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So everybody else, Counselor Ray?
Sorry, so it sounds like, or it looks like to me, and maybe I'm losing my mind, entirely possible at this point. Um, everything that just went into the parking lot was already being funded through other sources. And so it's not going to.
Even, even if it is, we can move things around. So let's.
Okay, so those things might be eligible for that or?
Exactly.
The things that we were, that are in the bond column could possibly be eligible for other sources if we could do switchovers. Okay.
Right. So if, if I tentatively earmarked it for bond premium and you take it out of there, I can put something else down there. Or if it was in fund balance, we can move something that's in the LCIP over into fund balance now. So don't let that worry you.
It always, I'm just like, what are the rules?
Now, once you tell me what you want to fund, then I can give you new proposals.
Perfect. Awesome.
Are there any other capital items anybody wants to either discuss or put on the list?
Just a reminder to the council, you know, after these workshops, then I, I don't know about, you know, some of you, but I always go back and kind of look. So it's difficult to do it in such, you know, in a brief meeting, come up with, you know, thoughts. So as we, uh, so don't hesitate to call or send emails. Heather, uh, not Heather, I'm sorry, Alicia.
Sorry, can we, are we all, could I also put things that are on the fund balance list on the parking lot?
Uh, no, yes, yes, you can.
Yes, okay. No rules here. Um, uh, not because I'm against it, but I'm just curious, uh, why we need repairs already. Uh, the Jude's Place banking repairs?
My understanding, I can at least tell you why.
Yeah.
And we can still keep it on the list is my understanding, because the funding was so tight to get that project completed. The banking, where there's some erosion issues, did not get completed.
Oh, okay. So that's more of a finishing the project than repairing the project already?
Correct.
Okay.
Is, do you still want that on the list, Counselor Ray?
No, that's good. And then, um, I just, I, uh, 4941, what is it called? Actuarial reserve portion?
What page are you on, Alicia?
That's the worker's comp, the $100,000? Yes, that's what I, we, that's helping us fund that $4 million.
That's the transfer. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we'll jump into the Public Works general property now, and that begins on page 48. So to kind of give you a little reminder tutorial, and I had to do this with the city administrator recently and he kind of laughed and he probably has my scribbles hanging up on his wall right now. When you are looking under the account column, all of those accounts are going to start with a four. It's the second digit that tells you what category it falls under. So if it's a 41, that's going to be in your personal services. If it's a 42, that's going to be in your contractual. 43s are supplies. 44s are the fixed and then 45s are capital. And the reason why I'm revisiting this is that's how I'm going to talk about your cost drivers. If there is in contractual or it's in supplies or so forth. So I'll kind of keep refreshing you on that. So the first one, all of these are our municipal parking garage, city hall, and then the um, 185 Park Street was the former violations bureau that now has some of the joint operations for the police department in there. So city hall is the first one. It's the 4191. It had an overall increase of $5,100 or 3.6%. It's all in contractual services. And you'll kind of hear a theme, utilities in this particular case are one dry, cost driver. That's $3,400. And that's based upon CMP, the Unitel gas, and then the water and sewer increase. Repairs to equipment had a little bit of an increase um, based upon usage and the age of the building and the equipment. Repairs to building had a thousand dollar increase. And that um, not only impacts the exterior window cleaning, but also we needed to swap out the panic alarm system at city hall due to the new 911 radio project. So that's probably the biggest cost driver in the repairs to building for the addition. 85 Park Street, this is the second full year um, of repurposing that building. And it has an overall increase of $13,400 or about a 34% jump. And again, it's all in that contractual service. Utility increases make up $3, uh, $3,000 of it. Repairs to equipment make up $2,200 of that increase. And that's based upon the HVAC preventive maintenance that is needed there. And the state is requiring HIPAA filters in all buildings that they are leasing either a portion of or in their entirety. And then the repairs to the buildings, which is the biggest cost driver there is $8,200. And that's for the HVAC control panel replacement. That is an item that I am looking at as part of proposed adjustments to you of moving over to fund balance, because that would be eligible. Then we start our parking garages. So the first one is Oak Street. And that just has a slight increase of $1,400. And that is in a combination of uh, utilities and telephone. And it was offset by some repairs to buildings to give you a net effect there. The Canal Street or the Centreville parking garage had an over, in that same neighborhood, had an overall increase of. Had an over in that same neighborhood had an overall increase of about fourteen hundred dollars. We're increasing outside rental. By fifteen hundred dollars. That's for snow removal. Repairs to building by about eight hundred dollars. And we actually had a decrease into the repairs to the equipment about thirteen hundred dollars. The Testnut Street Parking Garage had an overall decrease. Of thirteen hundred dollars. And repairs to equipment. Because we did some work there for the um. The gates and so forth, offset the increase in the repairs to buildings. And we rotate which buildings get the exterior window cleaning and it's this um. Parking garage that's due for that exterior window cleaning. Southern Great Way also had an uh decrease of almost two thousand dollars. And that had an overall decrease in utilities based upon utilization. And repairs to equipment, which offset the slight increase in repairs to um. The building and so forth. Lincoln Street had an overall decrease of just about four thousand dollars. So we decreased the utilities there based upon estimates. Of about fifteen hundred dollars. And outside rental. And so forth. We are looking at an increase in the repairs to buildings. So again, most of these are very small or minor adjustments between the repairs to equipment and repairs to buildings. It's the utilities and how they play out that are driving whether the parking garage has an overall increase or decrease. And we had um a decrease in snow. Fighting in that parking garage as well. So there's not a whole lot of fluctuation in the parking garage expenditures for this year. Any questions on those?
Um, Heather, just quick question. I remember the finance committee approved a parking garage revenue management system. Is it, is that included in here or? I see a lot of repairs. Aren't they supposed to do that work?
Um, you at and Dale can help me with the timing of that. You you as a council. Did a series of budget transfers to fund that initiative in the current operating budget.
Okay, current. Okay, thank you.
And then Heather, I thought we had an LCIP item to augment that this.
Yes, but as far as the operating budget, it that particular project is not impacting. I fully expect once it's up and running. It it may impact FY twenty three if we have to pay him. A maintenance and licensing agreement on the software, but as it stands now, that's not impacting the parking garages.
Thank you.
But at that point, we should also expect that revenues will significantly increase in the parking garages.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
Other questions? If not, we can jump to public works, which begins on page fifty nine.
Mayor, I'd like to bring Mary Ann in just in case questions for her.
Thank you.
One page thirty thirty five, is it?
Fifty nine for public works. Everybody all set? So we start off with public works administration on page fifty nine. And overall, um, before we get into the dirty details there. Um, the overall increase for public works was seven hundred and seventy thousand. Nine hundred and eighty nine dollars are twelve point five percent increase. Um, I will continue to highlight personal services as it. In some instances, that's your primary cost driver in this department. I will also review that the public works department had a series of new program and service requests. Um, and they totaled about three hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. Including hiring a temporary construction inspector that is supposed to be expenditure neutral. Um, extending the solid waste Saturday hours by two hours. Hiring a part time environmental educator. Kind of increasing the operations in the municipal garage by two mechanics and one equipment servicer. And then hiring a temporary worker dedicated to a building data project. They want to um. Convert the building facilities. I into one of the Beehive modules, but they have to get a lot of that. Building date data in there, so they want to get a temporary worker to kind of facilitate that process. Um, they also want to expand their street light program into um the Beehive system. There's a request to start replacing the decorative trash cans throughout the downtown area. They'd like to resurrect the tree program, uh, the tree replacement program. Um, several years ago, there was a fifty fifty program in place where a taxpayer could elect to buy a tree. And pay fifty percent of it, um, and this municipality would contribute the other fifty percent of that. They are looking at also contracting out for a series of initiatives, including um vacant lot mowing, which has been. Um, a recommendation or at least a request for a number of years now. Um, irrigation services for the downtown gardens. Uh, weed and maintenance around the canals. And then looking at doing a holiday master plan and tree lighting service for the downtown area. So that's a summary of the new program and services. When we're looking at public works administration on page fifty nine. That had an overall increase of just under eighty seven thousand dollars or forty four percent. Which sounds significant and it is, but they moved a position from highway to this department. So of that eighty eight or eighty seven thousand dollar increase, eighty three of it. Is in labor. Eighty three thousand dollars of it because they moved the deputy director from highway to this division. So you will see a decrease. In highway and it won't be apples to apples because there were other salary adjustments in highway. Contractual services increased by twenty nine hundred dollars. Um, we had an increase of in the telephone account for seven hundred dollars. Again, the the. Cell phone stipends moved over with that. We had a small increase in repairs to equipment of a thousand dollars for copy maintenance agreements. And then a request for in-service training for about eleven hundred dollars. They have a a. Number of new hires and new positions are at people in their new management roles at public work. So she wanted to. Um, provide additional funding for some supervisory training for the leadership. Supplies rose by a thousand dollars. And again, that's based upon printing within the uh various departments and what gets charged out. Engineering also had an increase of a hundred and twenty seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. And of that amount, all of it is in personal services. So you have a combination of restoring the project engineer position. It was one of the twelve frozen positions. And the engineering tech three position. Along with colas and steps. So that's driving that cost in that particular department. Contractual services decreased by fifty six hundred dollars. Through vehicle rental. And then again, you had a small increase of fifteen hundred dollars for in-service training. Due to attrition and getting some new engineers in. There's a desire to send at least one of the engineers to a national conference. Assuming we can start going to national conferences again. Counselor Ray.
So. I'm having some trouble with the numbers here. Um, so total engineering percent change is almost a nine hundred percent increase.
Yes, it is.
Under salaries, wages, regulars, so back at the top of this list, it's minus two hundred and thirty two percent?
Because of the charge outs. If you look at. The FY twenty two budget, or I'm sorry, the FY twenty one budget.
Yeah, I think it was negative.
That was a negative because they are assuming they are going to charge out. More than essentially what they're doing because they are.
Because two positions were.
Because two positions were cut as well as. For MDOT grants and some of those others, they are allowed to incorporate some of the fringe when they do the charge outs.
Oh, okay, that's helpful.
And then some of that de- division also goes to our three utility funds. So they went from essentially a credit balance to a deficit bound or to a debit balance from accounting firm. So you had those together, counselor.
Yeah, so more than just the two positions are factored in there. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, Heather, I know, so does the new services programs included in this? What we're reading right now? No.
No, new program and services are included in the base budget. I'm just kind of reminding you what they asked for as well because.
Oh, okay. I'll I'll have more questions when you conclude.
Okay. Counselor Clement?
Apparently the budget book must have raised my hand here, sitting on the keyboard. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So so Heather, I wonder, so under the new programs request. Uh, you know, I know we have it at the start of our budget book, but I wonder if each department could be listed out on. You know, have it broken down by each department. And I know it's kind of listed here, but it's kind of different though working through the budget and then. And then maybe every director could kind of. I don't know, list it by priority, uh, just so we have a, okay. And before.
And I believe, I believe the public works director has already started that with the owner within her department.
Okay, and then during the workshops, I think, you know, when we're done a specific uh department. I I think we should give each director a moment to, you know, highlight anything they feel is important for the council to know.
Sure.
You okay with that, Dennis? Okay. Alright, thank you.
So we're on to highway, which is on the top of page sixty. So this division had an overall increase of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy four dollars. Um, in this particular case, personal service actually decreased and that's moving that position. That we talked about up into public works admin. Contractual services increased by forty thousand, six hundred and thirty three dollars. Of that amount, the bulk of it is the increase in street line painting. So we had a number of adjustments in markings and the contract pricing, so that really drove that line item up. This for FY twenty two. We also have a lot of signs that need to be repaired based upon their um reflectivity standards. Um, some of them are not reflective at all and we need to start really replacing that inventory. And then we had a small decrease about thirty one hundred dollars in in utilities in this division. Supplies rose by just under twelve thousand dollars. Tarring materials makes up ten thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars of that. And that's attributed to cost increases in coal patch. Winter ops, they use about a three year average on this. And we are anticipating winter ops, which is on the bottom of page sixty and carries over to page sixty one. Of increasing by sixteen thousand, four hundred dollars. Of which. Sixty five hundred dollars is made up of personal service increases. And then the remaining increases in supplies for ten thousand, sixty five dollars. So we have construction material. And then uh, that pretty much. Makes up that entire balance and that's for the sand salt. Materials. And then the housing authority was buying sand and salt from us, which was credited in that account. We have now moved that into the other supply account where it should reflect. Counselor Ray.
Thank you. Um, could you speak to the vehicle rental in this particular line? I know it appears a lot of places in here, but I'm just wondering why. Uh, like how specialized are those vehicles that we continue to rent year over year?
So the vehicle rental account. Versus outside rental account. Outside rental account is when we're renting our other rental is when we're renting from an outside organization. Vehicle rental is rental from our municipal garage. So if we cut a vehicle rental account, we have to cut a revenue side of the municipal garage. They go hand in hand. So you can't cut one without decreasing the other.
Okay, so that would be consistent year over year because it's us charging ourselves. Okay.
Right.
I was just like, if we're renting vehicles, why don't we just buy them? But.
No, yeah, we're renting from the motor pool.
Yeah.
Sidewalk, obviously, those are funded either through um the LCIP or fund balance. Street lights, this is probably has the biggest fluctuation um from a budget standpoint because there's a lot of initiatives going on here. So we have an increase of fifty seven thousand dollars or about sixteen percent. Eighty one thousand or or almost eighty two thousand represents the increase in personal services. There was a position in that division that was frozen as part of the twelve frozen positions, which is why you see the drop. We have a decrease of contractual services of forty two thousand, six twenty five. And that's because we're still reaping the benefit of changing out. The uh, street lights to LED. Um, we now, I believe we have, this may be our third full year. With that program up and running to kind of see what that savings is. So we we reaped another sixteen, sixty thousand dollars there. Which offset other increases, including repairs to singles of about sixteen thousand, five hundred. And again, that's moving not only the repairs, but the fiberic optics connectivity. Moved into this account as well. And replenishing a lot of the inventory items in that division. They were running low on several items. Supplies increased by seventeen thousand, six seventy five. And again. Based upon historical usage, it's replenishing that. Inventory for poles, fuses, lights, banner, harnesses, all of that stuff. Counselor Cleve?
A little bit off track, not really, but um, I really hope we can improve our street lights. Um, because many times I've seen it dark, really, really dark outside and scary. And it's scary, so I hope we can like really improve on that. Um, yeah, that's it.
Okay. On the bottom of page sixty one and the top of page sixty two. We're looking at the solid, a solid waste and waste disposal. So the recycling collection piece of that rose by eighteen thousand dollars. And that's primarily in the contracted service for waste collection pickup. That contract has an annual price escalator in it and that's running us about fifteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. And we had a slight increase in personal services there about sixteen hundred dollars. But again, those are charges from other divisions. The disposal side of things, which is at the top of page sixty two. Had an increase of forty six thousand. Six hundred and fifty eight dollars. Twenty one thousand, five hundred dollars relates to personal services. The balance of that relates uh of the increase falls in contractual services. The balance of that relates, of the increase falls in contractual services for twenty-six thousand dollars. So we had an increase of a thousand dollars in printing. We need to reorder the recycling stickers that the taxpayers or the citizens can put on various buckets, trash cans, and so forth to recycle. We have an increase of twenty-one thousand dollars in utilities. Part of that, it relates to the rate increase. The other part is we had a meter that was monitoring the Liché system that was not measuring the flow correctly. So that has been replaced, and unfortunately, that is impacting this particular utility account. The good news is it goes to our water fund, so it's one big happy family. It's just increasing this particular line item. We have an increase in miscellaneous services to cover the increase in the maintenance and licensing on the new scale house software. And then we had a small decrease in supplies of a thousand dollars based upon usage. The open space and tree work starts at the bottom of page sixty-two and continues onto page sixty-three. It had an overall increase of a hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, or seventeen percent, of which ninety-eight thousand is coming, falling in personal services. Half of that increase is for temporary wages. That goes back to when we, at the beginning of tonight's workshop, we talked about temporary wage adjustments and jumps. This is where we saw that. So half of that personal service increase falls in temporary wages. And, and that enables the department to do watering, field maintenance, mowing, you know, on all our city-owned property and so forth. The contractual services rose by thirty-nine thousand dollars. We had some small increases in repairs to buildings for twenty-five hundred dollars to replace fencing and playground equipment. We had a fifteen thousand seven hundred dollar increase in repairs to grounds. Particularly Pettingill Park, Samar Payne, and Veterans Park need mowing and seeding due to grub issues. Outside rental rose by sixty-two hundred dollars. That's rental for a bucket truck for Halloween, holiday decorations, as well as pickup trucks in the summer for the temporary workers. Downtown maintenance rose by eleven thousand dollars. That's to replace damaged holiday lights, as well as increase the maintenance for planters and gardens and the fountains and so forth downtown. Miscellaneous services rose by two thousand dollars because we needed to start spraying for poison ivy and, again, increase graffiti maintenance. Tree maintenance rose by ten thousand dollars, and that's due to the number of dangerous trees. And then we had about an eighty-four hundred dollar reduction in utilities. Supplies was pretty neutral. We had offsetting adjustments where household supplies, because we're not operating the pool this year, offset the increase in small tools and so forth. Counselor Ray?
I just wanted to ask about the tree bait program that's in here and.
Your timing is perfect.
Yeah. It's just, I know we voted on it. It was voted on in the council before I even started, so at least three terms ago. And then our last council had to vote to reaffirm it. Does that have to happen again?
No, so what, and, and I was just getting ready to talk about both of those, so you're, like I said, your timing was perfect. We had two components. We already talked about the fifty-fifty tree program.
I'm sorry, is someone unmuted? I can hear, like, a radio. Is that just me?
No, I can hear it too, and I'm wondering if it's because of the fire radios outside.
Is, is your house on fire?
My house isn't on, no. It started once they just went by, so I'm not.
Oh, okay. It's like, is everyone okay?
Yes.
Sorry.
No, I wouldn't be this. So we had the fifty-fifty tree program a number of years ago. And then the form, with the formation of the LA Community Forest Board, a lot of that initiative had, and including the tree planting garden up there, has kind of taken that place of that. Right now, the Forestry Board has about eleven thousand four hundred dollars at its disposal as of year end to do its initiatives throughout the year. To Counselor Ray's question, the tree break program, back in FY eighteen, sixty thousand dollars was approved to establish this program to kind of offset the impact of the stormwater fees. So there was a balance of about fifty-seven thousand dollars, and only three hundred dollars had been spent to date. So it wasn't a highly utilized program. So back in March, and I think it's two years ago, the council rescinded that program, all except for five thousand dollars. And as of June thirtieth, there's still forty-five hundred dollars left in there, and we've only spent two hundred dollars to date.
And so someone would still apply through that program for the fifty-fifty match, even though we discontinued future funding?
Exactly.
Okay.
People can still use that program until that remaining, until all of the five thousand dollars is drawn down.
Okay, so anyone out there who wants a tree?
Yes.
On clearance for fifty percent off? It'll help you.
Any questions up to this point?
I had one question. So I know in terms of, like, the pool, I know other rec departments, like, generate their own funds to some extent. But regarding the pool, do they collect fees?
Right now, and we are going to talk about the rec program a little bit more in your workshop on Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
But, but the pool does not collect fees at this juncture, when it is open.
Was that ever talked about?
Yes, it was.
Yes, it was. You probably don't want to bring it up again.
It was a highly political discussion.
Yeah, that discussion really centered around underserved kids not having access to, you know, to refreshing pool services, where other kids in our community easily travel to lakes and stuff, so.
Right.
Okay, makes sense. I would be on that side if anyone.
Okay, so moving on, we'll talk about the hydroelectric in the canals. That's on the bottom of page sixty-three. That had an overall increase of ninety-seven thousand two hundred dollars. So we had a minor increase of about thirteen hundred dollars in personal, personal services. The entire increase is actually in contractual services. And that's in canal maintenance. We consolidated those accounts, and we kind of bumped up the maintenance amount for, to a hundred and one thousand dollar increase. One of the things that, or the rationales, is the beautification along with the bush mowing along the canals. That was an LCIP request. Given that essentially you're mowing something, and that has a repetitive process, it would be hard to issue debt service for that particular piece. So we are dedicating funds at this juncture to really get a handle on some of that mowing around the canal, get the overgrown portions of it addressed, so you can go back and just do regular mowing after that. The good news is that was offset by a decrease in utilities of about sixty-four hundred dollars to mitigate that a little bit. And then we had a slight increase in supplies for hydraulic oil for the canal gates and so forth. The municipal garage is on page sixty-four. That had an overall increase of ninety-seven thousand two hundred dollars, of which a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So all of that was in personal services because we restated two of the equipment mechanic positions that were frozen. We have an increase in contractual service of ten thousand eight fifty-five based upon anticipated sand blasting and repairs needed. Outside services rose by forty-four hundred dollars. Repairs to vehicles by about that same four thousand dollars. And then since we have some new employees, in-service training rose by about fifteen hundred dollars. The supply category increased by sixty-one hundred dollars, or just about sixty-two hundred dollars. And the bulk of that is about ninety-six hundred dollars is attributed to the new gasoline lock-in price. That begins in November of 2021. So gas rose by nine and a half cents, and diesel actually decreased by four point one cent. And as you may have noticed on the price, when you fill up your tank, I think we got a very competitive lock-in price. And based upon what tires needed to be replaced this year, the, that particular account also decreased by five thousand dollars. The Public Works Buildings, that's the overall building operational division, rose by forty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars, or just under twenty percent. Forty-three thousand seven hundred of that amount is in personal services. Contractual rose by just under twenty-seven thousand, uh, hundred dollars, which is made up of two components, that vehicle rental increase, which goes back to the municipal garage, and in-service training by seven hundred dollars. The Public Works Buildings account, that's the actual building facility at Public Works, that they had an increase of forty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. I'm sorry, they had a decrease. I grabbed the wrong one. They had a decrease of one thousand two hundred and twelve dollars. And that had offsetting adjustments. So a decrease in utilities of five thousand tempered the increase in repairs to buildings of thirty-eight hundred dollars. And that's attributed to pest management and the generator maintenance contract. The city-owned parcels are just as it's described. They're parcels that we own throughout the city. Right now, the cost driver on this particular thing is, budget is the Martel School. So it did decrease by twenty thousand dollars because we moved the canal maintenance up into that hydro account. But we still have some relatively significant expenditures there because we don't know when the closing date on the Martel School is. Counselor Ray?
I was hoping you might just speak to the money we've expended on that property in fiscal twenty-one, being closer to twenty thousand dollars.
I'm sorry?
So in fiscal twenty-one, on the Martel School costs, it's about twenty thousand dollars, and we're going back down to fifteen thousand for next year. Could you talk about that difference?
The Martel School was at fifteen, and we're keeping it at fifteen. The twenty thousand dollars that you're referencing is the canal maintenance. And that actually went up, and it was part of the canal maintenance, a hundred thousand dollar increase in the hydro division.
So we were billing to the wrong.
No, I say what you, all right, you're looking at actual.
Yes.
Four thousand. Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that piece. That included getting a lot of Martel up and running. As you might remember, we had to do some remediation work, some furnace work, those types of things. That, all of those kind of transitionary costs were taken care of during that fiscal year.
Okay, and the fifteen thousand for FY twenty-two's budget is to keep it running until we close and just.
That's correct.
Get rid of. Okay, thank you.
Utilities and general cleaning, those types of things.
We don't generate revenue from the share center being there, do we?
No.
No.
We get the benefit of the share center and taking things out, but that's, that's where it is.
Okay, great.
So city-owned property, you said, is Martel, and then mostly lots, or?
Mostly lots. We do have one lot, and I'm going to forget the street. But we have, it's, it's a private road that all of the residents on the road pay a portion of snow plowing. So we do have a cost, a small cost associated with that. It's not significant. It's about a thousand bucks a year.
And can you, so can you explain the telephone service and then utilities?
Canal maintenance, the canal telephone system for alarms and so forth has fallen under this division as well. And one of those things, we're slowly starting to clean up. Because initially, when we acquired the canals, we were going to put it under this division. But it, it's so closely tied to the hydro still, and some of those co-joined expenditures, that we're, we're starting to consolidate that up into that four-three-six-one account. So in essence, we could move some of those things up to that account as well. We just haven't got it all flushed out yet.
Thank you.
So that's kind of all I had to talk about. So it might be, unless there are questions, it might be a good opportunity to let the Public Works Director share with you anything that she would like to share.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, who I forgot to say, and Councilman, thank you for having me tonight. I really am looking at, you know, a couple of different divisions with some big changes, and that's the Rec Division and the Lighting and Transportation Division. Again, being a past traffic engineer and looking at what we had for supplies there was really starting from ground zero. So it's going to be a building process, and also looking at partnering with MDOT to look at some cost sharing for doing a better job on our signals. So there's still a lot of development happening there. And again, with the, you know, the Rec Division, we'll talk more about in the other one, but I really feel like, you know, those are the biggest changes. And when you look at the open space, it's really going back to the amount of temporary wages that we had in 2019. We won't probably have workfare again this year. We didn't expand on any landscaping. We're trying to get back to maintaining what we had. Even without all the plantings not going in, we still need to maintain these areas so that they don't get completely, having to be completely replanted again. So open space is a lot of manual labor. It makes sense to do some of that through temporary services and temporary wages. I think we, you know, rent trucks and equipment for that. We don't have equipment for, you know, the people that we have for temporary services. So I think we do that in the most efficient way that we can, but we certainly want to keep the cleanliness and the beauty, the beautification projects up. They mean a lot. They come in a lot of different areas, that touch economic development, safety, all of those pieces. And just taking note again, Counselor Kehit, of, you know, areas that are somewhat dark. So we want to make note of some specific areas that you're concerned about, but thank you for having not a lot of tough questions.
Good, Mary Ann, could you, the canal system, and, and I might have missed it, you know. This discussion may have happened before I took office. Because I believe the canal systems are a real economic development driver if we, if we do the right things with it. Is there a plan in place? Is there a five-year plan, or, you know, when is, when, when is that canal going to be accessible? Either through decking or good fencing? Could you just share your thoughts on what you see for the future? Could you just share your thoughts on what you see for the future there?
Sure, I know we bought it for a buck and we need to invest in it, first of all. And what we've looked at this year in putting in our capital program is the basic needs. So we're designing in-house a ramp to get down into the canal so that we can do better maintenance down there. Of course, the cleaning up and the spraying of the grubs and all that stuff to be maintained. And then there's that red shop, and the red shop, there's a capital program just for the structural repairs. And then starting the public process of doing a plan for the canals is another project put forth, I think is the LCIP under the Planning Department or Economic Development Department. So we're really looking at the structural pieces, I mean, we've had hydraulic leaks, we're looking at how to decommission some of those power hoses. I had a fantastic tour with Dan Rogrigue about really understanding how we have all these power places and each one of the plants still and each one of the mills. So those have a special process of just dealing with safety issues, safety, structural cleanup, and then starting our visioning for that. So that's kind of starting first is let's maintain what we got and then where do we want it to go?
Is that a couple of year process, I would assume, that just the cleanup and getting it so that the parents' wives is okay?
Right.
All right, thank you, Counselor Ray?
Thanks, um, I, I know you said this at the beginning, Director Hunter, but can you remind us? So should we use this time right now with the director to talk about the new programs and services and put those on the parking lot? Okay, like, I, I did six hours of school committee budget yesterday, we did differently, so just want to make sure I know the rules.
Well, we're kind of fluid in the process.
Okay. So to Director Brinjic, I wanted to better understand the effort to add two hours to the Saturday solid waste. Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Sure, I, I really started with four hours because it closes at noon and there's a line a mile long. And for the normal person and the normal families, their cleanup day is Saturday. And to be more customer service is to extend that and then looking at the new solid waste superintendent coming in, looking at adjusting hours for being more customer friendly. I mean, we, we are on a Public Works seven to three schedule, who takes off work to get to the dump? You know, so the transfer station has to be accessible, I think, later in the day as well as longer on Saturdays. So this is a stepping stone in that direction. And as we hire new staffing up there, we have updated job descriptions to say that your, your, your hours may change.
I think that's fantastic and like very constituent focused. Since I bought a house, I was like, what do you mean I have to be up at seven AM to avoid the? And the mayor knows, not a morning person, so I, I do think that, that customer service kind of switch seems important to me, I'd be more interested in shifting the hours than extension, but I do know there is usually a line towards the end. Is that flow all day long or is the morning much more quiet?
I haven't looked at all this particular stats on that, but I do know that Saturday is all overtime right now.
Wow, okay.
Like that, I think it can be scheduled and shifting with new positions to have the coverage for Saturday and even our new superintendent to be there on some Saturdays.
That's helpful, so I would definitely love to put that on the parking lot as well as the environmental educator. I think that could be a real value add.
And Alicia, could you clarify, are you asking to put the four, the director's recommendation of four hours on the parking lot or?
Let's start with the two.
Right.
So.
I mean, I started with four and I did reasonably to let's get the stepping stones to.
You want the four mayor?
You, you're not going to see me bring out too many things that add an increase to the budget, but I got to tell you, our, our, our dump, our, our yes, thank you, our transfer station, Kate is more to businesses than our own residents, so I, I just think Saturday should be a full day for our residents, so.
So at twenty-three K?
I think it needs to be, I think it needs to be there for discussion. The four hours, and I don't believe it should be overtime, I think we should, you know, we should find a position that, that, that's part of their schedule.
I'm just going to keep going if that's okay, so environmental educator is definitely interested in putting on as well as receptacle replacement. I think that was it.
Counselor, that would be one that would qualify for fund balance too.
Receptacle replacement?
Those, yes. So I can, if, if there's a general thumbs up consensus, I can kind of start incorporating that, those fund balance items to see where the percentages fall, if there's general interest for that.
Yeah, we talk about trash in the downtown all the time. And so I think just having more receptacles or better ones or whatever it is, is always a good idea.
And can I go?
And I'll hold on a second, Alicia, you all said, or did you have more? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Keate.
Definitely, I would love to. I'm definitely interested in the solid waste and environmental educator as well. But also I'm thinking making that as a full-time position and as a, I don't know, like the task and responsibilities to increase in terms of making a citywide environmentalist in terms of, you know, helping our community members and our, even our students, so maybe hopefully the, the school can even contribute some of its salary in, into this position where, you know, our, our students and community members inspired to do environmental work to ensure a cleaner, more sustainable future. So that is definitely a position that I am highly interested in. And also, so in terms of the server position for the fifth, three thousand, you said that, I was reading the description and it's, it looks like other responsibilities may be added, and it does make sense to do like minor mechanical problems. Can you tell me if that other responsibilities and tests are added, will, will it increase? From what it's currently presented right now? Will it stay the same?
The, this is for the garage mechanics?
Correct, yes.
We, we're having a very difficult time finding mechanics. And so we're reshuffling that around to have some level positions so that we start to build up and train. So that servicer will always have a level that's at that thirty thousand, that's someone just coming out of a two-year program, maybe less than one year experience, and then there'll be a next step up and then a full mechanics. So we're looking at having to do some mentoring and training in-house, not competitive with the private sector is a problem. Where we don't even have enough mechanics for a second shift right now. So we're trying to look at, you know, restructuring that and a servicer is the bottom level. We're looking at a middle, minimum level, middle one, be like A, B, C or one, two, three. And then the top one will be the full-fledged mechanics that we have, you know, three working right now. That's, we have two out on, you know, injuries and two vacant, so we're looking at just coming to recruit from schools and colleges. So we build that kind of succession planning because when you have different levels of mechanics, and they've always just had that one level, so there'll always be that one level that doesn't change at that thirty thousand because you're going to always want some new people coming in.
Makes sense, and also I think like the trash replacement cans around the downtown is very much needed. Especially we have, if we do support the environmentalist position, the, just, the, in, you know, the area just looks, it's unfortunate the way sometimes the downtown area looks like, even the Sunnyside neighborhood too. I hope that we can even put like try, big trash cans around, around that neighborhood and even across our city, why not? So that's something I'm interested in. Can I also talk about the rec department? Is that under, no?
No.
Not yet, not yet, okay.
Next workshop.
Yeah, next workshop. But any questions you have that you want to send to the director in the meantime, or Heather, feel free. Okay, any other questions or comments for the director, Heather, or our city administrator? Counselor Ray?
All right, I, I didn't, I was so concerned with process that I just, I didn't say like, thank you for this, what looks to be a responsible budget and thoughtful budget to me. I, I know you haven't gotten through this process, process with us yet, Director, so I just wanted to acknowledge that there were lots of needs in Public Works, but I think recognizing where the city and our constituents are in conjunction with other city administration, I just wanted to thank you for that.
Welcome.
Okay, any other questions or comments, councilors?
So Mr. Mayor, I would remind the council that on Tuesday's workshop, we will be covering the rec department, the rec activities, as well as all three utilities, water, sewer and stormwater.
All right, seeing no, go ahead, Counselor Keate.
Um, do we also have like a separate workshop for like economic development or is that under another general government?
No, there'll be a, a date specific for economic development, every department will, will.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, you earlier said you wanted to see listed, I believe, all new programs on a separate sheet by department, and that would include new positions as well?
I, I, yes, I, I believe it will, because.
Well, if not, I would like to request that that be added, all new positions and all new programs by department. I think it would be listed separately.
And also I think I, we, we did ask for a list of all the positions that are currently open and prioritized, regardless of, you know, if they're an unfilled position or a new position, get everything prioritized as we work through this process.
That would work as long as it's delineated vacant, additional or new, whatever, specifically so we know what has never been there before and what is being asked for the first time.
Okay, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anything else? All right, that, that's it, right?
Can I just clarify, isn't, aren't the new programs and services on eighteen and Director Hunter sent us an email of the detail?
Yes, but I think I, I'm trying to get things broken up by departments for new programs. And it, it's in a paragraph form, but I, I, what are you looking at?
So on page eighteen to the left, it's listed by department.
That's all new program. That kind of does cover it, I think, doesn't it?
Yeah. I was like, what, what else did you want besides that?
I, I do know the mayor had requested the positions because that's usually the bulk of it in priority order. And then we can, based upon your request, Mr. Mayor, we can have the Public Works Director prioritize the solid, I'm sorry, the Public Works request because they make up the lion's share of the rest of the requests.
Okay.
Now this, on page eighteen, this is all new programs or service requests, you could list out the vacant positions that are not filled as well, is that what you're looking for, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, we're going to get a list that combines all, all positions that are currently open, new or vacant, or, you know, open ones that haven't been filled yet.
Nothing like a new list, thank you.
So Counselor and Mr. Mayor, can I clarify? Your request Tuesday night were, was for the frozen positions versus vacant positions?
The twelve positions is the, is what.
I just wanted to clarify that because we do have other vacant positions.
That haven't been filled yet?
That are not, that are in the budget that weren't part of the frozen positions.
Oh, yeah, I do want to see every, a list of every open position.
Yep. I concur.
And it's easy, you know, as councilors, it's easy for us to see an open position, but that's why I think we need a priority listing to everything because it's just so easy for us to say, oh, it's open, let's just not fill it. You know, I want to be able to hear from department heads how vital that opening position is to them. Okay, thank you, Heather, for clarifying that. Okay, any other questions or comments? Going once, twice, I have to do this because suddenly at the last second, it's like I'm already at. All right, well, listen, thank you, everybody, and thank you to our directors who attended just to, you know, stay up on the budget process, but Mary Ann, we really appreciate you taking the time and the good work on your budget. Okay, have a nice evening, folks.
Thanks, you too.